That makes sense. All right. We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. First item is the Pledge of Allegiance. If everybody could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. I just want to thank everybody for being here this evening and coming together to discuss the dispatch budget. First item, unless there's no changes, there's an adoption of the agenda. So it's kind of a joint meeting. I know Chris has taken minutes, Connie's taken minutes, so we'll kind of do the city and then county can approve however they need for their minutes. City council members, is there any changes to the agenda that you see?
Motion to approve.
Okay. County, I got a motion made by John, seconded by Larry. County, do you see any changes either? Okay. So we'll do our motion. You guys can do yours after that, or just keep your administrate. So, like I said, motion-
Other than, I don't know if there'll be an approval or not.
Yeah, there may not be approval, but we can table that part if we get to, if there's not an approval for number, so. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda stands approved. David, I'll let you do your part.
And on the counties, yeah, any changes to the office agenda?
I'll make a motion.
Have a second. All the things that say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Six, zero.
Okay. Well, we'll just dive right into new business now. The 2024-
Seven, zero.
Yes.
I was going to say, I was counting up the names I wrote down. I've got seven.
2024 Dispatch Budget for Discussion and Approval. You, Connie did distribute a copy of the budget, right? Did you all get that? Did they all get one of these?
Yes, of the updated. They all did not get a copy of this, but they did get a copy of the updated budget.
Okay, do you want me to get one?
I do not have enough for them. They're going to have to share.
Do you mind sharing? Kinda-ish? Pass them down that way. And if we do get copies-
They've got, you've got one of these, right? I apologize for not-
Here's an option for Larry and Keith.
Larry, this is updated.
Larry has one?
Yeah.
So give one for Keith.
Yeah. And I apologize for not having one.
And here's another one, somebody else wants one.
Yeah, here's, I've got one in my hand, too.
We might have close to nothing.
We may have.
Okay, so if you look at this here, we'll just start at the top and kind of work our way down. Does Chief have one?
Yes, he does.
Okay.
And I have provided Steve Howser with one also.
Okay. Just want to make sure both of us have them. Okay, so we'll just kind of start at the top here and work our way down through it, and we'll just kind of ask if you have questions regarding what it is. I'd be willing to answer the questions best I can, Steve or Chief. I'm sure we'd both be willing to answer the questions. If there's something on there, because I know there are four new county council members on this, on the council since the last time all these are approved, and if you have questions, let us know. We'll try to do our best to answer it. The E-911 funding, $141,452. Lit Public Safety PSAP estimate is $340,000. Lit Public Safety co-share is $86,000. County share from General-
County share.
Huh?
Co-share.
Co-share, did I say county?
No, you said co.
Oh, county. Okay, sorry. County sheriff of the General Fund Hospital is $35,000. The city of Cannleton is $12,500. The town of Troy is $3,000. For a total of $617,952. Moving down to the next item, collected by the city of Tell City, Tell City Electric Department, $9,500. Tell City Wastewater Department, $2,000. Tell City Water Department, $2,000. For a total of $13,500. The city of Tell City's share on dispatching, $217,293. Total funds collected for dispatching, $887,745. The 2024 proposed budget is $921,906, a funding shortage of $73,161. So, then-
The top funding comes from the county. What, I, we've got those figures from the county.
Okay, the top here, as Connie was saying, the top, so in the blue up there that were labeled county-wise, that is numbers that we got directly from the county from, I guess, Chris and Connie worked together on that part.
Chris and, yes.
And Steve, yeah.
Mayor, may I ask you a question?
Sure.
So, in a sense, we're looking at a $73,000 shortage proposed for next year versus what it was this year?
Correct.
Is that right?
It's not based on last year, it's based on the income. And that our budget increased.
Well-
This year to what, to next year or this year?
Some of it is salary increases.
Yes.
So, for dispatching salary, and then also there's 75% of the assistant chiefs, in this case, it's Flamian, that oversees dispatch. So 75% of his salary is going into this, that number.
To be paid.
To be paid for out of that, because the majority of his job duty, 75% of it is dispatching, you know, the scheduling, the hiring, the firing in ways, and the training, and making sure everything's up. You know, if it breaks down at 2:00 AM, Phil's the one that has to go down there and kind of put the pieces back together. Before, that was never included in it. It should have been, because he's managing, overseeing the actual services, so that's where that number comes in at. Chief, did I explain that right? Okay.
But also, in this budget here, that issue of positions for clerk record keeper?
I believe that was taken out, right?
That was-
You request two.
Yeah, there were, after last night, I talked to Steve, the medical examiner, there's just one, the records coordinator, he's taking that.
Okay, so, and I, I'm on a straight line here. By requesting the county to use the consent of the assistant chief's salary, you're telling us that, the consent of his work is with PSAP?
It's with the management of the dispatch services, yes.
Consent by consent, yes. Okay, if we do approve that position, will that take the, his duties or help him a lot relieved, the assistant chief, as far as records, uh?
Well, it's-
So we're working on the person full-time, but I'm sitting there.
That is coming out of the postpaid, not the, not the dispatch paid. The records coordinator position is in the dispatch paid.
But the records clerk, we moved, after the council meeting last night, they voted to move that position to the police department and take it out of dispatch. It's already coming out of the police, but it's now, it's coming out of the General Fund Police Department.
That's where the overall, and you also, it looks like, dropped the clothing, the insurance-
The holiday, the FIC and Medicare, and the impres. I did not do anything with insurance, not knowing which person is going to move, or who would move into that place, you know, what kind of insurance they would take. So I did not decrease anything on health insurance.
So I'm going to add that if the other person's not on board, that's what we leave the assistant chief a lot of time in PSAP.
They've already been on board, we're not, it's not anybody to move. It's, it's-
Are you going to go the person on board?
For, for police functions.
For police.
Yeah, not dispatch. I mean, they're going to be certified to dispatch, so we're going to be pulling them out of there like we always do, but it's not for anybody else on board for that, because we've already been doing that, you know, it's just things we're already doing.
So you're asking the county to give you more money for the assistant chief?
Yes, sir.
So that's, that's something that you didn't charge last year?
No.
That I don't see on here.
We didn't, and it's just, you know, if you give faith, I don't know. Our, our, we're of the opinion that we just, our police service is our priority. We are giving up a police officer to do those services, you know, to carry out those duties, and it just doesn't, it's not right for us to do that. I just, so it's not anything changing as far as the duties or whatever else. It's all the same still.
The only issue I have with this, that I would like to see, I mean, I know there's time constraints, and he's doing the best he can, that the former assistant chief, which we didn't tip him on, was certified up to step in. Then you've discussed, I know that you said he's working on it. I think that percentage is a little high, I mean, 75% this year, or in 2025. I don't know, his certifications will be ready to go by January 1st.
He's, he's currently enrolled in class, he's, it's a-
I'm not saying he's not, he's an effort, you know.
Yeah, there's a new, there's a new law that just came out, it kicked in in July, or it kicks in January 1st, that all dispatchers have to take an online course and have to get certified as a duty to state, state name, so. He's, you know, that was one of the things that Phil and I discussed when we became assistant chief, was that, that was a requirement that I would ask the assistants, if they're going to, if they're going to be a bulk of dispatch services, they need to be certified. I don't know, if you're, if you're given guidance on a job, you need to know how to do the job, that's just something that I believe in. So, you know, he's, he's enrolled in it, so he's trying to get those certifications right now. You know, and I don't need to tell you, well, we've just had unprecedented times on our hands, and we've had a court of integrations, and some of that stuff has kind of not moved along as quickly as we would like, or something, if you can be fair.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Can I ask a question? I noticed the share that the city of Council has been reduced in half from what I have recorded last year. And this town of Troy has been reduced in half what was on the sheet that I had from last year. My sheet last year, I don't know what they ended up paying, but Council was budgeted for $25,000, and Troy was budgeted for $6,000.
That's correct.
What's the reason for those reductions?
County, that's in your, it's in the county's thing, I'll let them speak.
I think it all came about as when there were cities, fortunately, it was like $150,000 less or something, they brought it, there's no way Council and Troy would go for that also. I think that time did it was reduced in half. I think that's where that came about.
But does that mean that they're going to do that again, just automatically, arbitrarily? I mean, that, that doesn't make sense.
They should pay their fair share in this own-
I mean, you know, I would think that the, it should go back to the full, but we don't have representatives from those entities here, but.
If they would go back to the original budgeted amount as last year, of the 25 and 6, and you, you're reducing that to almost 60?
I don't agree with you in discussion, but it's being dropped in half.
Well, yeah, I don't, I can't speak on that, I don't want to make that, I'm sorry.
And also-
Do you have another question about that one, or something else?
Well, it's, it's related to that.
Okay. Then Steve, I think Steve might be able to answer it, but I'll go ahead and answer your question, ask your question.
Tell City shares are used by $5,000.
Yes, that would be-
Why?
That was based on the formula that was prepared by when Luke Thomas was in there. I don't, I was trying to find my spreadsheet, but it showed our number decreasing every year, because it wasn't a-
Okay.
Because they were changing the rate, so their part was going up and ours is going down.
And this is the, I don't know if you have a, you might have a copy in your folder somewhere of that from years past, but. But yeah, it showed our number going down.
I thought it was for, was this estimate?
It wasn't necessarily going down by 5,000, was it?
Yes, I used-
It was because the PSAP tax was going up, because people were tipping more.
Yeah. It did go down five, according to the scheduled sheet here, because then it goes down even another five. Yeah, well, yeah, about another five for 2025.
Anticipating collecting more. And this, this actually, it says lit public safety PSAP estimated, I think, wasn't it 345?
It was, but we, I decided, and I talked with Steve, I'm sorry, I did not get to talk to Kim or Chris today, but just to be on the say side, we just, I just reduced it a little bit, just because if the state would change it when it comes along in December, when we get that final number.
Steve might be able to answer some questions, Larry. Steve, I don't know if they can hear you talk, if you enter the microphone, you're welcome to, if you talk loudly, I'm sure they'll hear you too, but. Thank you, Steve.
To answer Larry's question, the agreement on the city of Tell City, 2022 rare share, it was $145,248. The actual monthly payment, if you will, to, was less than that, they made $146,924 for the United States, less than the path that they agreed to. So when we went to the town of Troy and Cannleton, they said by that, why should we pay our full share to Tell City on the back? So from that one here, they had agreed first of its payments here, and they were going to pay here, at Troy and Cannleton. We went back and negotiated, they agreed Tell City's share off a half, that they would also, you know, that they had, they made $12,500 per town, and $3,000 for the town of Troy.
Where does this 2023 figure come from?
That is actually the 2023 benefit, because we did not know that the Tell City's share was $146 until January of 2023. We won't know what Tell City's share is this year until January of 2024. Tell City's will be in the reverse.
Okay.
What they had, that was $159,145,51.
I see. Definitely don't deserve, or city don't, where is her benefit about that?
It's in the city, it's in the city general fund. That is where all the money is received, when we receive it, from the county. Because that is where the claims and are paid from, is the city general fund.
Definitely, I'm here for a thing.
Correct.
Unappropriated funds.
Can it be used to help offset this funding shortage, or?
Well, I think that shortage comes from the assistant chief's salary. I don't know what, that 73, exactly what portion of his salary, I know that's not all of it, there's other losses in that, I guess. I, 75% of assistant chief's salary, what is that, Connie, do you know off the top of your head?
It's on the budget. It's $50,209.
No, it's $50,000, yeah, so $50,000 minus that, so if you take out assistant chief's, it would be 20-some odd, $3,000 or whatever.
Well, and that, you know, the employees, we put in raises for the employees, which I'm sure-
Well, and they did put in raises for the employees, that does-
You know, all employees, hopefully, at the county, and I know the county, city is, and I hope the county are getting raises.
I have a question about one thing, and I just want to know how you came about this, because I don't really know. The health insurance, so I'm looking at the budgeted health insurance, well, first of all, 2022, it said health and dental insurance, 53,422, so that was 2022. 23, there was budgeted $150,000, and up through August, it looks like you spent 54, so we're way low on that right now. I mean, I know we still have, that was up through August. And then I noticed that, so next year, it's increased to 165. If, do you think you're going to come in close to the 150? I mean, we're only at 54 through, you know, just beginning of September. I just didn't know if that was something that can be looked at, no, right here, so if you look at the health insurance, it was budgeted 150, and we're only at 54.
I would say that's down, and I'm going to totally throw this out there, but whenever we were short dispatchers back in, beginning of the year, that might be where some of that savings came from. I don't say savings, but why it was reduced, because you weren't paying it, you don't have an employee to pay it.
Was it down half?
Uh, we were, yeah, we were down. And it depends on, it depends on what kind of insurance they take when we get a new employee. They may take single coverage, they may take family and spouse, and children, and, you know, they have four choices of what they can take. We are not self-insured anymore. We're fully insured. So, so it, it's one of those things that's very, very hard to figure. And if I don't do it high enough, then we're going to have to come back and do an additional next year. And who's going to approve? You know, our council approves additional appropriations, but is it going to have to go before the board, and before you all, and everything to, to change it? So, I mean-
Is your interest changed considerably?
We have not gotten any figures for next year yet. So what I put in, I put in, I was, I intended to put a 10% in, is what I intended to do. And that's what I did on our other line items for insurance.
Did you base it also on the current employees we have now, and the plans that they're receiving probably to get that 150?
I don't remember.
Because I'd say it would be pretty accurate, I don't know many dispatchers leaving, but-
Right.
They could find another, another job tomorrow.
Well, it didn't go up that much from last year to this year, from 150 to 165, but I was just curious, because we were only at 54, how many, like, I guess I didn't realize there were some shortages earlier in the year.
Yeah.
There were, because we switched assistant, well, former assistant chief Roger went into that role for two months of that, maybe January and February. And how many dispatchers were we short during that time? Because it was, it worked out where he was able to fill that void, if not, we'd have really been in kind of a pickle without him. Were we short two or three during that time? Because-
Yes.
We, I think we were short two this year, and we were, you know. Roger was in the regular role, working in a regular rotation.
Yeah, he was being paid as a regular patrolman, or lieutenant, I guess, but dispatching.
But he was getting paid out of the police budget, not the dispatch budget.
Right. Who was doing dispatch work.
Who was doing dispatching, yes.
For at least two months, maybe December even, three months. Because it was in December part of it, I think.
I, I would have liked to seen, I see 400,000 in published, I would have liked to seen that broken out, you know, titles, employees, or whatever, and-
If they're all dispatchers. The 400,000 is covering dispatchers. That is for all the dispatchers.
Eight full-time dispatchers.
Eight, nine, would have-
So they all get paid the same?
Yes. Unless they're on probation, unless they're under probationary status when you start, but otherwise, they're all paid the same.
So this one is nine.
So therefore, we add the 400,000?
Plus their overtime, and that too. So you just don't know what their overtime is either.
But just looking at it, it's like, we're a thousand, I don't, you know, and I did not know they all made the same.
But they do.
Some of them may be here longer, and they may get paid, I didn't know that.
Yeah.
And that, they, they do have-
So the salaries includes nine full-time, plus their overtime, whether they're working on the weekends, or?
Nine, so eight full-time dispatchers.
And the records in that same?
No, the records is not.
So it's only eight?
So it's only eight, yes, sorry. I, yeah, the records, no, the record is a separate line item.
Records is down below.
Is the 44, 45, the coordinator is 44, 516.
So how, how did you determine the raises, or whatever, is it a percentage?
It was a percentage.
We did it on dispatch, I believe it's 4%?
No, we did a 5.5.
5.5, I'm sorry.
To bring them up to the medium salary of other local departments.
Okay.
Just back to the clothing and holiday pay, is that divided by eight, or is that divided by, is worth of eight?
Be divided by eight.
Is it holiday pay? Is that what that is?
That, with the coord, the coordinator would be included in that, in clothing pay and holiday pay.
So that would be divided by nine?
Eight, nine, one.
Connie, can I ask a question? Just we get into this, as far as this paper right here, with the city of Tell City's share, just so I can understand, I know that last year, like, so is, is this where that 300 and, the 300,000 that was originally, and then you guys only paid the 146? So will that 217,000, 217,000 be reduced as well next year? You understand what I'm saying? Are we looking at a bigger deficit, considering the fact that last year, what I'm understanding, is the number that was right there for the city of Tell City's share on dispatching last year was 305,238, and the amount that was paid is 146,924 cents.
Where are they getting 146,924?
I've got.
All right. Thank you.
Does our total of 6,000 that we spent last year on dispatching?
I was looking back at this.
Well, yeah. That's what I was trying, I'm sorry, I'm trying to find-
I think that's what came into play last year, I was involved in this, because I was here, and it's Steve Howser, and said we actually dealt with Troy and Cannleton, wrong, Cannleton and Troy, in 2024, with these amounts. Because these interlocal agreements originally were 25 last year, and they were 6,000, okay? So then, when we took the interlocal agreements to them this year, they, Steve, tell me if I'm wrong, but they basically said, the city only paid half, so we're only paying half. That's where we only got the 12,500 and 3,000, because this was done in April. What I'm trying to point out is if we're looking at the exact same spreadsheet that we had here from last year, that amount that I was given, that you guys were originally going to pay was 305,238, which would be that number where the 2,000, 217,293 is. I'm only talking this year.
Well, the spreadsheet, the spreadsheet that I have in my file for last year shows that the city's share was going to be 222,293.
That's what I have.
That's what I have. That's what the minutes say.
222,293.
We had a short call.
I don't think we received all of that, the amount that was received in, was one, this year was 146, 146,924 cents.
But see, we don't, we don't pay the county anything.
Like as far as proportion there, you're not necessarily paying, and that's what you guys did, because there was a deficit, so you subtracted off of the loss last year. I mean, Steve and I talked about this back in January, so I'm trying to remember a lot of this, I'm just trying to-
I never did, I never did get any paperwork on that at all, I just know what the paperwork was that I provided Steve, showing what our total, what the total 911 dispatch budget was, what was paid, and of that, 600, it was a little over 648,000 that was paid. So far, I just ran this, this is, that's not the one I got. Well, through August, on dispatching, we have spent, here today, 461,493. That's through August.
This is the one I have. I'm just trying to say if this number 217 is going to be, going to be less, then we're looking at a bigger deficit, that's going to be 3,000.
But why would it be less?
Do we end up spending any more?
Steve, just for a crazy question, have you heard any more about the state 911 increasing that from a dollar to $2? What, any more status, is that kind of just? Okay. Because that would play a huge role in these numbers, obviously.
I'll be honest, I can't answer that question. I, until I would sit down and try to figure it out, I don't know. You need a back? Yeah.
That may be, uh, because the, some, some of the expenditures, expenditures might have been not properly categorized. And I say you're not doing a good job, don't take them wrong, but that, we, that has been discussed, in figures.
Yeah, we've explained that forward and backward, I don't know how many more times we've been talking.
We've all come at that.
I mean, it's, just like, just like she said a while ago, you know, Roger, Roger is a police officer, he wasn't getting paid to be a dispatcher, and he works in here as a police service that apparently didn't. So it's coming out of the police budget, he's getting paid, lieutenant paid, he's working in dispatch, so, I don't, it's, a paper looks one way, if you're going to have a look at it, it's another way, so I think it's, it's however you want to look at it, you know.
So what he said is, we paid Roger as lieutenant to work in dispatch. But we, well, so other people understand it, just, I know you might, but people watching may not quite get this, we paid Roger to work in dispatch for three-plus months, on a lieutenant's salary, paid out of the Tell City General Fund, not out of PSAP funds. So it makes, it actually makes our, whenever we could have been paying a dispatcher in there, which we weren't- there, which we weren't, so that's why that looks like it's.
The shortage.
Does that make sense? I kind of left off hanging there. Steve? I, I can't answer that, but I understand that's part of one of the reasons. Now, there may be some other things they said, but, yeah. I don't know.
It could be.
Well, we didn't include his health insurance in that, obviously. I don't know what plan he has, or if he's in honor insurance, I can't answer that. You got something for saying, I'm sorry. Well, what does everybody think on this? I mean, I know we've got a lot, this is a good workshop, it's a good discussion, glad everybody's keeping their cool. This has really been very productive, I think, at this point so far. What's, what's everybody's thoughts on it? I know several of you are new to this. I know Stan and Kelly and, and Gail are all new. Keith came in on it last year, Ian there, because you got pointed in partly through it, so you're still kind of new, but not new to it. What, what are your all's thoughts? I mean, Chris is new to it, obviously, too. This is, this is a lot to take in. And, and it is complicated, but I'm pretty sure everybody's taken time to work through it and try to understand it.
I'm saying, how do we operate in home? How do we make up that 73,000?
I don't know. I, I wish I had the answer to that. I know, obviously, that number came from some increases and putting in assistant chief's part of his salary and created some of that. And there may be a little more into that, obviously, that insurance stuff. I don't, I don't know. I, I don't know. I guess the, the best thing we could do, and I don't know if Connie can do this, I'm sure you could, just do you have time? You could, you could go back and figure out when Roger started in there on that day and how much that actually cost figuring in overtime. Because he did work overtime. And I don't know what that number's going to come out to be.
I don't know either, you know, but yes, that can, it would take some time, but yes, we could do that.
I mean, it's for three months and then there's other overtime from other employees into that field and obviously when you're short, I, I, I mean, that would take, I know there's a lot going on. Everybody's got lots of budgets, but. I don't know. I mean, we was short 31 last year, or short 73 this year. Sounds like we're, and if you look at it, we're still really only short the same 30 amount as we were last year. Because if you take the assistant chief's 75% of his salary, you subtract 31 from 73, it's probably close to 75% of the salary.
I mean, did you say, did you say that the?
If I had to guess. Between, minus, between the two?
I don't.
So short 23,000.
It's, it's going up, yeah. The, the figures that we received show that it's going up.
Is that, is that the amount that's in there?
Yes, yes, yes.
Assistant chief's salary, maybe not like 75, rather a 50, 50 split.
I mean, he, it helps some, but I do feel assistant chief's 75% of his time. Whenever I've been over at dispatch, Phillip's, he's there doing, doing the thing with it. I mean, he, I feel like he, that role of that position puts it in. I mean, the only other way we could fix that is if we actually, the city or the county or someone hires someone that oversees that and then that salary would go towards that. And then Phillip would be freed up or the assistant chief be freed up to do patrol work or, or whatever, you know, that he needs to be doing. I think it would cost more in the end by the time you figure in.
Because if they have to come in at the night, they're going to charge them.
Well, that's on our end. That's for city work, not county.
They took that off.
Yeah, and they took that off. That, that extra, that additional records person only benefits city of Tel City police work.
Oh, to explain that a little bit more, there's still a lot of records business for the police department. We have to release police records and active reports and things like that. So, you know, if we didn't have the dispatch center, we'd still have a records department. So that's why the records work position would stay under the police department.
Yeah.
Well, I understand that, and I know, and of course, we've got people who are retiring and different offices and, you know, like everyone else, learn and do more or less. We will. But some, some officers will care, I can't say.
But Paul, just to, to make sure that you understand, they, they removed that with this recent.
I think he's saying the records coordinator's.
Oh, yeah, that's the one.
The records clerk got removed, but the records coordinator's still.
Right, right.
Yeah.
You know, in September, do you have a good estimate of what your expenses will be for dispatch service for the year 2023?
Let me speak to that just a minute. If you look at this report, national report, through August the 30th.
Which they do not have that report.
They don't have.
Larry, I apologize, I did not make that for them.
Yes.
Well, I did email it, I emailed it to them, that is correct. I just didn't make them copies for the seat.
Through August, through August 30th, uh, total expenditures, 461,493.34, okay? Which is approximately 59% of the budget at cost.
Yeah.
Through August 30th, eight months out of 12 months is 66% of the year. So. We're approximately 7% under spending, but I'm sure there were expenses incurred in August that weren't paid in August.
Correct, that will be paid in September. Or somewhat, one, one time in September and we've got another pay coming up.
Okay.
Yes.
So we're not that far off, I don't think.
Not, not, considering a budget, budgets a lot of times are estimates. That's what they are.
Exactly, always, exactly. I, I didn't know they didn't have.
We have email.
I had some good stuff.
There you go. I'm going to look at mine.
So where do we go from here? I guess is the next question. I know some may be ready to vote, some may not, and if we want to have a special meeting Monday night to actually adopt this whole budget, we, we can. We have a regular city council, or excuse me, portal works and water board meeting Monday night. We can do it before or after, I don't know what this council's schedule's like that Monday, if y'all can make it, or if you want to do it tonight. It's totally up to you guys, it doesn't matter to me. Oh, yeah, 48 hours. Yeah, very good. We need to do it tomorrow, but yeah, we're good.
Mayor, I may throw you a curveball here.
I'm okay with that. I'm used to.
But, um, I, I think to move this along, I would be, and I'm speaking for myself, I'm only one vote, I would be comfortable taking, um, 50% of the assistant chief's salary out of dispatch, dispatch. And that would reduce the, that would, so.
It reduces some.
By 25, so.
But I would be willing to do that.
Oh, no, it would be 25. No.
It would be roughly somewhere in the ballpark, just not knowing assistant chief's exact salary.
Yeah, I know, it's fifteen.
Oh, I have no idea.
If the fifteen, I don't know, I don't have my calculator out, but.
Yeah, and I didn't bring his total set, I thought I brought it, but I didn't.
There would still be a shortfall, but it would be some of the shortfall in a way. Well, council, Larry's kind of made a little suggestion, but city council wise, what, I'm looking, I'm looking, look at how many council members I have. I don't know who's on my council, I'm getting confused. What are, what are your, what are your all's thoughts?
I'd be comfortable with Larry's recommendation as far as that goes.
Okay, okay. Gary, I mean, you feel?
I'm going to go with that.
Okay. So that's, that's a compromise on the city's side of trying to work together. Chief, I mean, assistant chief, you guys live this, work this more than I, than any of us do. Doing what? Oh. Yeah. So it's a step in the right direction, but I think it's something.
And I would say, I mean, I would say, I would ask the board, if we posted that position today for half of the bill salary, and say you're responsible for lending to the 911 services, the responsibility, they come with that, community, all the people, 24/7, deal with all the call-ins, personal issues, if they were here for 30,000 or whatever it is, would you find somebody that would be there for 30,000?
And he's right.
I understand what you're saying there, I'm just asking that. It's a way to pick up, I'm not saying the assistant chief don't care in time, I'm just saying that a way it helps, it's a place to find $300 to help us out. Without doubt, this is something that's.
I mean, I understand helping out, but I, I'm going to throw this out there, we helped the county out for 40 years prior to this quite a bit. I know, I know.
Forty years, we can't do anything about, you know, there is.
I understand that.
And just to be fair, the city of Tel City share of dispatching, 217,000, they don't have to pay any of that. So that is where I stand. I am glad that they are helping and putting that money in because if they didn't, the county would be responsible for that, the tax would have to go up on the people. That's the bottom line. And, you know, we say, well, Hamilton only paid 12,000 and Troy paid 6,000. Tel City is expected to pay 217,293. I know they didn't pay that last year, they paid 150, what, what was it? I get that, but that's 154,000 and they're technically responsible for, I hate to say that, but it's the truth because it is the county's responsibility. I feel like they're being good neighbors and in good faith, paying that because they, technically, they don't have to. That's the bottom line. I mean, what, if Tel City pays $1, it's $1 more than they really have to.
Well, because Tel City residents are being, in essence, double taxed. And that's not fair.
I don't know if I want to squeeze them a whole lot if, on that.
Right. And that's what we're doing, we're looking at tomorrow. And I brought that up, that is this, it, it kind of gets this little sore, but I'm over it.
So, so one thing that I just would like to say is, I, I appreciate that, first of all, that you're paying anything. And the only thing that I have is if, for some reason, at the end of the year, if the health insurance comes in different, if it's 165 and it comes in 50 because we have three fourths of the dispatchers don't take insurance. I mean, I'm just making up a scenario. Would you guys be willing to set aside a reserve for that type of thing to help the next year? You know, so, so that we can, I mean, maybe they'll use it all, maybe, you know, it could be, but it's such a variable that I just feel like we're at 54 right now and, and who knows? I mean, maybe something could happen till the end of the year and it would take up the whole 150, but if we're at 54 right now and it ends up being 75, which is half of what was budgeted for, I feel like, you know, can we have a little? That's where I would rather have a compromise instead of telling you, yes, your duties are 75%, but we're only going to pay you 50. If you're telling me your duties are 75%, I have nothing else to go on other than that's what they are. And I have to trust and believe that that is what it is. And I, I would rather find it in the variable cost.
I'm still confused on that, this is because, so if last year we became a, basically, are you saying that last year we became a short 31,000 dollars? Or were projected?
It was projected.
Projected this year to cut it to 31,000.
Yes.
At this time of the year, last year, that's what was projected, yes.
The county agreed to pay.
Okay, so you guys absorbed that?
The county absorbed it.
So, okay, the county.
Yes.
Okay. So then, when was that decided?
Um.
There's an additional appropriation.
Well, we approved the minutes October 3rd, city wise did, so the August 25th roughly?
For last year?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so then where we're looking at right now for 2024, our projection is that it's going to be short.
Seventy-three, yes, for 2024.
For 2024. So do you have to decide, I'm just asking, I'm just wondering, so do you, are you guys needing to add that into the revenue today? Or is that something you guys can wait until you see where you're at when you run short? You see what I'm saying? We already got this projection of 617, almost 618,000 dollars coming in for 2024. We're not going to run short 73,161 in January, February, or March. So what I'm saying is if, then you just, just.
Yeah, but they want a commitment to that.
If we rush, if we.
Yeah.
If it run, so would they make the commitment today, the county makes the commitment today, would you make a commitment to make up the 73,161 of that amount? What if it is more?
Well, that, I forgot how we discussed that last year, I'm trying to find it, we talked about those minutes.
But you said you budgeted kind of the upper end, not, not on the lower end, so.
So there's no guarantee that we're going to run short 73,161.
Right, that's the worst case, like a.
And I can also, within that budget, we can do transfers. Because if you notice where I did on the August report that I gave you, we do have a couple lines that are in the red that I will have to be transferring money into by the end of the year. So.
Remember the interlocal agreements with Hamilton and Troy? None, because I was, I do notice that last year, that they, or this year, they weren't done until April. Should this something we should be contacting you about now instead of waiting till January 1?
I think this agreement here could be backed up into July and not until September.
Well, it says in the agreement that we'll have the budget done by August 1 and that's really impossible because we don't get those estimates till about August 1.
The contract.
That's old, that's old, old. I don't know why I had that out, I'm sorry, don't even look at that. That was the, that was the true town thing.
I'm just trying to be a non-negative Nancy.
No.
If you don't use it all, then don't.
We're looking at the fact that we might run short 73,161.
But we might not.
But we might not. Or we might run short more. It's strictly an estimate, so.
Maybe that's where that reserve comes in. If there's a good year where it's not crazy or.
We have full.
Well, unless they would take out Roger's stuff for dispatching.
There really isn't a reserve.
That's what I, I didn't know where this reserve.
To be honest, there really, technically, on paper, there is no reserve. I mean, that's, am I saying that right? It's back in the city's general fund.
City's general fund.
Because it kind of leads back to what Kelly said.
It just came off your share.
It just came off your share. That's what I was thinking, it just came off your share.
That's right, that's right. There wouldn't be one, it would just come off there, 217,000.
I have what I was getting at, I was just, that's what I, I was just.
But we're claiming it as a reserve, but really not.
No. I mean, does anybody want to, do we want to take time?
I want to, I want to.
Okay, that's what I want to make sure.
But that's not me.
You will pretend a program of motion?
To table approving the budget.
Is there any reason we would need to wait till after our budget sessions? I don't know what.
I wouldn't, money's money, I mean.
I'm just going to ask you guys, I'm not going to change anything.
I'd just like to have time to review it a little more and then, but that's just me, I'm just one person, so you guys.
Does the city council feel that way too? Or do you, I mean, I just wanted to get the consensus, y'all can vote.
I mean, not to nitpick it, to understand it for me.
It's not going to change anything.
Okay, hang on.
We did not vote on that, so I know.
Well, hang on, before we vote, we do have one thing and I, Larry had made a motion and.
No, it wasn't a motion.
Or was it a suggestion, I'm sorry.
Statement.
Or a statement, wasn't a motion yet, about the 50%. We do need to address that before we.
So then I have to go.
Before we adjourn today, we need to kind of figure out if that's what we want to do still. With what Chief said and what you all know, is that still, you still want to do that? Or do you, do you agree with Chief, you kind of want to go with what he said or, I mean, you guys are in charge, you're the budget, so.
I'm doing that under the assumption that this budget as presented is accepted, okay? I'm not, I'm not making motions to do that and then come back later and want to change the budget more.
Oh, okay. That's a complicated motion.
I didn't even, I didn't even write it.
No, it's not a motion, no. No, there's no motion before.
I think that Larry's, you know, his suggestion is more than fair, you know, and if it turns out that, it turns out more than seventy-three thousand, then we could readdress that at a later date, is that something we could do later?
I mean, that seems fair. I would hope that next year, I know we're considering fifty percent this year, next year, let's make sure we try to at least consider seventy-five percent. I know we're trying to ease some of this in and be respectful, I would encourage that. Just, I don't want that to get lost in the weeds. What was fifty percent last year, I don't want that to skip, continue to, you know, throw it out, throw this out. Sure.
I think that next year, I would love to see us develop a plan to have somebody outside of the police department, look at those options outside the police department, manage it, instead of paying the assistant chief at all. I would love to have a police officer there.
We can do that, no?
I would, I, me personally, I mean, I've heard a lot of good points, you know, Keith made a good point about, you know, ideally, it needs to be somebody that is a dispatcher to understand, you know, and I.
Needs to be a night.
I don't disagree with that one bit, that is, I've always said that, and you know, I can tell you that. I can tell you that we are hyper-focused on police service right now, that's our priority. We made a terrible fall last several months, and then want to put all the focus, and then we get into police service. So, I mean, I am certainly open to compromise like Larry suggested, I think that's fair, we've always been team players on this, I promise you, I want to try to do that, but I think that's where we need to go with this.
I think between now and next year, that whether the PSAP advisory board, to try to figure that, if that would be something for them to come up with.
Yeah, I mean, just, you know, trying to figure. As I described, we have a lot of, we have several deputies in there, I mean, it would be like, you guys have a jail, you know, that's a major operation, running a jail, we have a jail, you know, we're taking a police officer to run a dispatch, and you know, we need to have somebody that can be in there, that is, you know, long-horror, that's very dependent on where he is, so, you know, give him enough resources and just get him to manage.
So, real quick, just to wrap this back up, Larry, do you want to make kind of a motion on that effect yet, or do you want that, does that even need to be in a motion?
If you want it to be in a motion, I will make that motion, that we budget fifty percent of assistant chief's salary in the PSAP budget, that's what, or twenty-four.
Okay. Is there a second? City council-wise.
Second.
Seconded by Gary. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Let me add to that, and that we, at least the city council adopts that as our budget, okay?
Okay. Did you get that, Connie? Is that okay, that amendment, Gary? Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, city-sized, citywide side, we've got that taken care of. Thank you for pointing that out, because we'd have forgotten that, that could have confused us all.
Chief? That's a great suggestion, and moving in that direction, I have a.
And there's discussions, who's that employee? The county employee, or is it a city employee? You the county employee? Okay. Yeah, that's something y'all got to.
I don't, I, I don't think it should be possibly, that's something that needs to be looked at. If the county's going to pay the city or that employee.
No, I'm saying, if we go away, if we go away and let them.
You don't want to add an employee. You won't add an employee. Even though it's in this agreement.
He has it right there. That is the employee.
But he's not going to be that position next year. I'm just saying, I'm still not saying who's the.
Insurance and benefits, that's where the salaries aren't the problem, it's the benefits that go with it, that really drive up the cost of an employee. Okay, so now, we're deciding if we want to adopt this, or we want to wait till Monday, because if we're going to wait till Monday, we both need to advertise it in time, just to be in compliance with that. I think, see, I'm getting a consensus, the city council is okay with adopting it tonight. I don't know how the county feels, David kind of drive, I don't want to drive your best for you, I'm sorry. Steve had a question. Okay. David, I'll let you kind of address your council and what they want to do, if that's okay.
I'm ready to pull the trigger now. I'm ready to pull the trigger now. But this not going to change any.
I don't, there is no excess, there is no excess, and there is no general, there is no excess in general, whatever was saved, went back into our account, went back into our account.
It's just lowering their loss.
It lowered our, it lowered our share, but it doesn't, it just stays in our account because we were able to lower our share. There is no reserve account. I know you called that.
When you get down to particularly the county responsible for all.
They should be grateful for what we gave, rather than ask for what we didn't give. Did I sum that up in a rude way? I'm sorry if I did. I'm sorry, I didn't mean it that way, I really didn't, I'm just saying it.
I mean, at the end of the day, that's the truth.
Okay. So it sounds like both councils are kind of wanting to pull the trigger a little bit, so I don't care who goes first. County, Keith, yeah, let, is Keith making a motion over there? I couldn't hear him, I'm sorry.
Number seventy-three thousand. They minus the fifty, the change. Yeah, we'll have that in the motion.
But Tell City passed.
Okay, motion by Keith, sent by Earl, any other discussion? None? Call for a vote, all those in favor, do you guys say aye? Opposed?
Me. Just because I'd like to have more time to review.
Okay. City council-wise, we need a vote to approve the budget, too, now. So is there a motion to approve? Motion made by Larry, is there a second? Seconded by Gary. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Larry, or Gary? It's hard if you have a Gary and a Larry. Oh, my gosh, it's challenging at times. All right, so we're done with the budget, last thing we just need to do is adjourn it, city-wise, who wants to make a motion on city-wise to adjourn? Motion made by John, is there a second? Seconded by Larry, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. David, David did the counting. All right, we got through it.
And it's not that I'm not supportive of what you do, it's just I, I, it's a lot, and I like to review it.
You don't have to explain yourself. Seriously, you don't have to.
I'll still review it, and I'm just, I have a question.
Do I like to crunch the numbers?
I do. I don't want to say.